Quiet, please. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on the Committee on Housing and Buildings. Please silent all electronic devices. If you have any questions, please raise your hand and one of us is Sergeant at Arms will kindly assist you. At no time, please do not approach the DS. Thank you for kind cooperation. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good morning. I am Councilmember Bina Sanchez, Chair on the Committee on Housing and Buildings. Thank you for joining us today on our hearing for the heat season preparedness. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues who are present, Councilmember Aviles, Councilmember Barron, who was here earlier, Councilmember Abreu, Councilmember Dinowitz, Councilmember Carr. Those are my councilmembers. Anybody online? And those are my councilmembers, okay. It's great to see everyone. HPD, DOB, thank you for being here. Just two short business days since our last hearing on the Mayor's Management Report. Picking up from there, I mentioned that just last week I attended a nascent Resident Association meeting on University Avenue where the landlord is perennially unresponsive. According to the HPD online portal, the building has 74 heat and hot water complaints, 12 pest complaints, nine paint and plaster complaints. And when tenants' rights organizers provided a Know Your Rights training last week, and I was there, sharing that the first step was to call 311, as I mentioned on Thursday, they were met with an uproar. We called the tenant said, but nothing changes. Recurring complaints and violations are more than just anecdotal. All too frequently, councilmembers, advocates, and city agencies respond to thousands of housing quality complaints ranging from lack of heat to pervasive mold, gas, and electrical issues. And when it comes to heating issues, we know too well that unaddressed concerns can lead to lives lost. In January of 2022, when many in this council took office for the first time, we were met with one of the most devastating fires in New York City history. The fire at Twin Parks Northwest started by a space heater, as we now know, that took 17 lives, including eight children. We can never forget this tragedy and the conditions that created its possibility. As we enter this heat season, the council seeks to understand how HPD is improving upon its efforts to ensure that landlords comply with New York City heat laws. Heat season runs between October 1st and May 31st. During this time, building owners are required to keep minimum temperatures inside apartments, 68 degrees between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. if the temperature outside is below 55 degrees, and above 62 degrees between 6:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m., no matter the outside temperature. Complaints and violations are presently trending upward. In fiscal '22, HPD received 131,579 heat and hot water complaints and issued 131,638 heat and hot water violations. This increased to 133,274 complaints in fiscal '23, and HPD issued 133,257 violations. Yet enforcement continues to be weaker than it could be. A January 2023 report on heat code enforcement by the New York City Comptroller found that there were over 1,000 buildings where there have been heat issues that are severe and persistent every heat season between 2017 and 2021. Among those 1,000 chronic buildings, 25% of the buildings had no violations, indicating that the city likely took no action to address these heat issues. A 2020 report by the State Comptroller tells of a building that received 175 311 complaints, but not a single inspection and no violations were issued. Despite the nearly 900,000 annual inspections conducted by HPD per year testimony just days ago, far too many New Yorkers remain in substandard housing conditions. Over the years, the city has made strides in enforcing the city's housing maintenance code. The council has enacted legislation to remedy violations impacting our communities, including Local Law 18 of 2020, which established the heat sensor program, which my Local Law 70 expanded just this year, Local Law 1 of 2018, which created the Certificate of No Harassment, Local Law 117 of 2019, which requires HPD to audit 15% of all certifications of corrections of Class C violations, to name a few. And of course, in response to the tragic Twin Parks fire, we passed legislation to require more inspections of self-closing doors and Local Law 64 of '22, which prohibits the sale of space heaters without certain safety features, including requiring space heaters sold within New York City to be equipped with thermostats and automatic shut-off. In addition to these most recent laws, we will also be asking questions today about how HPD is using its tools from the emergency repair program to alternative enforcement, Article 7A proceedings, and CONH, similar to a hearing we had last year. So as we enter into this heat season, we'll dig in on what we've learned from last year and before, and I look forward to hearing from the administration on how you are performing, what issues you've identified since the last time we've discussed these issues, and suggestions for how to move forward. I would like to thank my team, my Chief of Staff, Sam Cardenas, my Legislative and Communications Director, Kadim Robinson, as well as the Housing and Buildings Committee staff, Taylor Zaloney, Claire McLaughlin, Jose Conde, Andrew Born, Dan Krupe, and Brooke Frye. I will now turn it over to the Committee Council to administer the oath.
Thank you. Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Sanchez and members of the Housing and Buildings Committee. My name is Anne Marie Santiago and I am the Deputy Commissioner of the Office of Enforcement and Neighborhood Services at the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development. I am accompanied today by the leadership of the enforcement team. Marty Weifman, Assistant Commissioner of the Housing Litigation Division; Grace Dafina, Assistant Commissioner of the Division of Special Enforcement; Joshua Cuchero, Associate Commissioner of the Division of Code Enforcement; Renee Pia, Assistant Commissioner of the Division of Neighborhood Preservation; Lois Winters, Assistant Commissioner of Data Management and Technology; and Angela Robinson, Assistant Commissioner of Administration and Internal Compliance. Thank you for the invitation to testify today about heat season. The mission of the Office of Enforcement and Neighborhood Services, which we share with the council, is to protect the quality of housing for all New Yorkers. Each of us here today represents a dedicated team of field and office staff who work every day to keep New Yorkers safe by conducting inspections in response to complaints, following up where heat or hot water are not being provided, educating owners about their responsibilities, seeking penalties, and obtaining court orders where owners repeatedly fail to comply with the requirements related to heat and hot water. At the same time, we strive to implement new laws, rules, and common sense procedures designed to improve the living conditions for New York City families and protect tenants from harassment. HPD is constantly assessing our processes related to heat and hot water. We believe, as validated by the Comptroller's report last January, that the city's active strategies for addressing heat complaints are generally effective when they are deployed. There are always challenges, however, and we are happy to have this opportunity to discuss where we were in fiscal year '23 and how we are moving forward into the fiscal year '24 heat season. The Housing Maintenance Code requires that hot water be provided at a temperature of 120 degrees Fahrenheit 365 days a year. Heat is only required between October 1st and May 31st. During daytime hours between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., heat is required only if the outdoor temperature falls below 55 degrees Fahrenheit. Between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., heat is required to be provided at 62 degrees Fahrenheit. This means that the inspector at the time of a daytime inspection must consider the outdoor temperature. If the outdoor temperature is 55 degrees or above, no heat violation can be issued regardless of the indoor temperature during the day. This enforcement criterion makes it difficult for tenants to understand why no violation is issued when they may feel cold, especially when the outdoor temperature is in the upper 50s or low 60s. HPD has received over 14,000 complaints this October, which is quite high given the temperatures this year, as compared to almost 19,000 complaints last October, as of October 25th. As you know from the Mayor's Management Report, code enforcement received 133,000 heat and hot water complaints that required action in fiscal year 2023. Almost 237,000 total complaints were received when we account for duplicate complaints, which is a slight increase over the previous year. More than 40% of those original complaints are filed anonymously. In addition to the data points in the MMR, I would like to provide some basic numbers about our response to heat and hot water in fiscal year '23. HPD attempted 126,000 heat and hot water-related inspections. We reduced our response time to heat and hot water complaints from 2.7 days to 2.4 days, which is a 10% decrease, and increased the percentage of complaints closed in one day. Over 61,000 complaint inspections were attempted within one day of the complaints being received. We issued 16,600 heat and hot water violations to 7,567 distinct buildings. Of those, there were 6,210 heat violations issued to 4,062 distinct buildings. About 47% of the heat violations, accounting for almost 2,300 buildings, were related to indoor temperatures of 64, 65, 66, or 67 degrees, indicating that heat was inadequate but was being provided. We saw a drop in the number of violations issued at lower temperatures, where the indoor temperature was under 60 degrees, from over 1,100 violations in fiscal year '22 to 940 violations in fiscal year '23. We attribute the overall increase in heat and hot water violations of 27% in fiscal year '23 over fiscal year '22 to a colder winter, especially in the early part of the winter, and the reduction in response time and the start of our restaffing of code enforcement. In terms of follow-up enforcement, we billed $547,800 in heat and hot water inspection fees. Related to heat, we initiated 1,200 cases in housing court and obtained over $4 million in civil penalties and settlements. Our emergency repair program is focused on heat violations where the heat is below 64 degrees at the time of the inspection during the day or below 58 degrees at night. ERP took action to address 3,294 violations in 2,353 distinct buildings for heat. Tracking the outcomes for these violations, ERP verified that heat was restored by property owners to more than 1,700 buildings, or 75% of that total, with an average size of 34 units, and HPD restored heat to 182 or 8% of buildings with an average size of 14 units. In the majority of the other buildings, which are generally smaller properties, we were unable to confirm the restoration of heat through callbacks, inspections, or correspondence. As we look forward to this heat season, grateful for the warm weather through this past Saturday, we do have some new tools to work with that I would like to share with the council. Most significantly, as we enter this heat season, we have increased our number of inspectors. During FY '23, considering both new hires and attrition, we were able to reduce vacancies by over 100 positions for all of enforcement. Our team has worked incredibly hard to interview, process for hire, and train staff as quickly as possible. For the title of Housing Inspector specifically, in June 2022, we had 129 Housing Inspector vacancies, and as of the end of this June, that number was only 44. We do still have Inspector vacancies that we are working hard to fill, and we'll be holding a job fair next weekend on November 4th, but we are in a better position going into this heat season than we were going into last, and we want to thank the council for their continued support. In addition, we have appointed a new Associate Commissioner for the Division of Code Enforcement, and we are restructuring the division to provide additional leadership to tackle the many new programs and projects we are responsible for, including the heat sensor program and the proactive self-closing door inspection initiative. As always, we ask for your support in all of our recruitment efforts, and we'd be happy to share all job descriptions with you and your colleagues at the council. In December, we will begin seeking the new civil penalties for heat and hot water, which were passed as part of Local Law 71 earlier this year. The Local Law increased the civil penalties from $250 to $500 per day, and $500 to $1,000 per day for subsequent violations, to $350 to $1,250 per day, and $500 to $1,500 per day for subsequent violations. We continue to refine and enhance our technology called Real-Time Field Force. Although this technology was implemented for all of our code enforcement borough offices in August 2021, through training, use, and the additional inspectors in the field, we expect it to continue to deliver more efficiencies for our team. RTFF allows our code inspectors working in our borough offices to start their day in the field for complaint inspections, improving productivity and allowing us to respond more quickly and efficiently than when we had to prepare inspection routes days in advance. In addition, we continue to implement the heat sensor program. During the fall, we reached out to owners whose buildings were enrolled in the program, reminding them of their responsibilities to install heat sensors, notify tenants, and provide reports to HPD. We advise them of the new changes to the program that will be implemented over this heat season as a result of Local Law 70 of 2023, including that heat sensor reports must be provided monthly to HPD, that they will be charged monitoring fees if they fail to install the sensors, and that they will have the opportunity for an early discharge if no heat violations are issued during the heat season. Our inspectors have already begun posting information in the buildings about the program as required under Local Law 70. We very recently provided a full report on the HSP to the council with details on the building selected and their status since entering the program. In a snapshot of the 100 buildings selected to participate since July 2020, as of June 30th, 2023, 59 buildings have installed heat sensors, four buildings received opt-outs from all tenants, and no sensors were installed. Two buildings were vacant, and 35 buildings did not install sensors or received opt-out from the tenants. Of the 35 buildings that did not install sensors or received opt-outs from the tenants, 16 buildings were issued at least one heat violation in fiscal year '22 or '23. For those 16 buildings during fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23, inspection fees totaling almost $30,000 were billed, and HPD initiated heat and hot water cases for which over 160,000 in civil penalties were imposed. HPD also sought the installation of heat sensors in six of the cases. We continue to refine our efforts to better understand and reduce concerns related to buildings with a significant number of complaints, but very few violations, or buildings that have an excessive number of heat violations issued, in order to inform the agency's next steps and strategies for addressing heat and hot water issues. In addition to our work related, excuse me, to heat and hot water, directly, we enhance enforcement of fire safety requirements, most specifically increasing the number of self-closing door violations by over 18,000. We have started our proactive self-closing door violation program, inspecting over 100 buildings to date. At the start of heat season, we reiterated our messaging to property owners not only about heat but about fire safety. We hope that the council and the fire department will continue their important messaging to tenants about the need for self-closing doors and the safe use of space heaters and other methods of auxiliary heat. HPD continues to find ways to improve our responsiveness, effectiveness, communication, processes, and our overall enforcement. Although heat and hot water enforcement is one of the most important parts of our work, we know that other critical health and safety considerations also must continue to be the focus of our enforcement efforts. Thank you for your continued support of the important work we do every day. We would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Deputy Commissioner, and to the full team at HPD. Very, very glad to hear of a lot of the progress that has been made since last year. It's really heartening. I know we all can acknowledge that we have more work to do, but these are steps in the right direction. Colleagues, if you have questions, please let myself or Taylor know. I'll start asking, and you're welcome to chime in. Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna start off with fines and fees, as you've talked about, in particular with the heat sensor program. $30,000 were billed in FY '23, and $160,000, and that was in fees, and $160,000 in civil penalties were imposed. Taking a step back from heat sensors and broadly speaking, at the code enforcement hearing last December, HPD testified that as of October of 2022, 94% of heat and hot water fees billed back in 2016 and 2017 had been collected, which sounded great, but for that year, that same calendar year, 2022, only 66% of those fees had been collected. Can you give us an update on those rates?
Thank you, Councilmember. As you know, HPD doesn't do its own collections. Our collections for our fees and for our emergency repair charges are done by the Department of Finance. We are working with them to update this number and expect to have it in another day or two. What we do know is that at the current time still, the old programs that used to help the Department of Finance with collections are not in place, and I know that they are working with the council on trying to move that forward, and hopefully that will be a help for us in what we see as far as HPD collections.
Okay. Thank you. With respect to the heat sensors program in particular, what do we know about the perennial, the pervasive heat and hot water issues in these buildings that are receiving these, you know, $30,000 in fees, $160,000 in civil penalties? What are some of the drivers in those buildings?
Thank you, Councilmember. I think some of the buildings really don't have ownership to speak of, and so a lot of the times, HPD is responding and doing the emergency repair, the patchwork, to the buildings, but there really is no owner that is taking, you know, full leadership in terms of responding to those buildings. In terms of the others, as we said, we are bringing enforcement where we can to try and push the owners to install the sensors. You know, some owners, of course, do claim, you know, that they have hardships in terms of their financial ability. We are looking forward to the implementation of some new programs, the Homeowner Help Desk, some of these other programs that my colleagues in other parts of HPD are overseeing to try and provide assistance to these property owners.
Thank you. So the HMC states that dwelling units must have an indoor temperature of at least 68 degrees between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. during heat season. However, I just want to draw attention to a specific case. I had a constituent that received a handout from HPD at the conclusion of an inspection that indicates the department only issues violations when indoor temperatures fall below 65 degrees. So what is the department's protocol, and particularly because you did mention in your testimony that HPD's focus is on where the temperatures are 64 degrees and below?
Thank you, Councilmembers. So we do issue violations for 65, 66, 67, 68, and I think I mentioned in my testimony that a fair percentage of violations are for those temperatures. Below 65 degrees, so really below 64 degrees is where we get involved with our emergency repair program and therefore follow up with the owners to do further enforcement through ERP if necessary.
What do you attribute? See, in your testimony, you said that violations for buildings that have temperatures lower than 64 degrees is declining, which is a sign, it's a good sign. What do you attribute that to?
That may be because we're getting out there quicker before the buildings get colder. I don't really know what else to attribute that to at this time. It's something that we can certainly look into.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so our next question is, at our code enforcement hearing last year, HPD testified that about 75% of buildings that had violations only had one heat violation. Can you update us on what that is looking like for this year and what enforcement has looked like for those buildings that have more than one violation?
So for fiscal year '23, about 72% of the buildings had only one heat violation issued, which is pretty consistent with the previous year. For the buildings that have multiple violations, that's really where we use our Housing Litigation Division. Our emergency repair program again isn't based on the number of violations, but really based on the indoor temperature at the time of our inspection. The heat inspection fees that we have, as you know, are applied after, I believe, a third heat violation is issued to the same property. So those are the steps that we take. We also, through our Division of Neighborhood Preservation, often reach out to the buildings with the most, the highest number of heat violations, to find out if there are issues for the property owner. What we sometimes find is that it is a gas restoration issue, which does take some time, unfortunately, as we all know, right? There are a lot of protocols you have to go through in order to restore gas. We help where we can. We have a good relationship with the Department of Buildings to try and expedite on the owner's behalf, if we can, with Con Edison or National Grid, but there are a lot of checkboxes to get heat restored, and tenants are, you know, understandably anxious to get heat restored and will call every day, but an owner may be working towards restoration.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. And on that note, I do have some questions around how DOB and HPD are coordinating. So in particular, DOB, I just want to start with boilers, right? So can you give us a breakdown of, within the city of New York, and we know that the requirement is self-report to the Department of Buildings, how many buildings have oil burners, residential buildings with oil burners, gas burners, and other kinds?
Okay. So in terms of the system, the city itself, are you referring to permanently installed boilers or?
Yes.
Okay, so permanently installed boilers, I'll get back to you regarding an exact number, but for the most part, there's a pretty healthy split between oil and gas, but for the most part, we see the trend is that people are going more towards gas, and if they had like a more environmentally unfriendly type of fuel, like number six fuel oil, they're typically going to number two fuel oil.
Great. Do you have a sense, if you don't have the exact numbers today, and I do look forward to the follow-up, if you don't have the exact numbers today, can you give us a rough breakdown? Are we talking like 40-40-20, 45-45-10, right? Like in terms of oil, gas, and then, you know, some of the newer sources, electric sources for heating?
Yeah, so in terms of existing systems, the prior systems are mostly oil, right? But then, of course, the newer trend is that the majority now, like a good chunk of it is kicking as gas. Electric, there's very few out there in terms of conversions from, let's say even gas to electric. They're really not there yet, but in terms of an exact split, I'll get back to you on a better number, but it's a pretty healthy split.
Okay. So moving to, and this is something we talked about at the hearing last week, moving to just understanding the self-report nature of, you know, the conditions of the boilers in our city. So according to the Mayor's Management Report, DOB issued 100,000 violations for failure to file annual boiler inspection reports from calendar year 2018 to 2021, and those, you know, those were kind of backlog from COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic is what you shared a few days ago. But here's something that I was concerned about, is building owners are required to conduct the annual inspection of the boiler and file the inspection report with DOB. What does the enforcement of this look like? And in particular, the statute says that if any defects are found during the inspection, the owner must correct those defects within 90 days of initial inspection and then file additional documentation with DOB. What does that look like? How often have we seen, has the agency seen owners filing that they have problematic, like issues with their boilers, and then coming back and filing again when they fix it?
So in terms of filing throughout the years, for the period where there was COVID and non-COVID, for the most part, the filing was pretty much consistent. So owners were filing during those periods.
What's the percentage of compliance?
I'll get back to you with an exact number, but in terms of approximate, somewhere in the 80s mark.
I'm sorry?
In the 80s mark, in 80s area, around there. I'll double-check the numbers though, but it's definitely, people were filing. Now, in terms of defects that are reported, the compliance rate, I'll get back to you with the exact number once again, but people are filing for corrections as well. People do file for corrections. In terms of the type of issues that people are finding, when I say people, the third-party inspectors, which are insurance companies, licensed master plumbers, OBI's, oil burning equipment installers, those folks typically report any kind of issues, whether it's hazardous or non-hazardous.
Okay. I don't love hearing, we'll get back to you on so many of the questions that DOB is getting, but tell us more, and I don't know if this question is more for HPD or for DOB, when you are seeing buildings that are having boiler, like the boiler, boiler issues are the genesis of the heat and hot water issues at the building, are you observing a trend between, a difference between whether they're oil burners or they're gas or other sources?
Yeah, I don't think we are seeing a trend about which ones are more problematic at this point. I don't know if you have anything?
Do you track that information?
We, I think we do collect, at least for the ones that we do the repairs on, whether they're oil or gas, but I don't have that data with me today.
Okay. Thank you. So turning to where you do the repairs yourselves. So, turning to where you do the repairs yourselves, so, so you mentioned a few thousand buildings where you are, HPD ERP is, has been responsible for the restoration. Can you tell us about these buildings? What kinds of repairs is HPD making in order to bring back the heat?
Sure, so, so I think, as I stated, most of the repairs for the emergency repair generating violations are done by the property owners. So, in seventy-five percent of the buildings, the property owner actually does the repair. What we do is we monitor to make sure that their repair is completed. We contact the tenants to confirm that heat is restored or do our own inspections to confirm that. So, we actually do repairs in a small number of buildings. For the most part, these are smaller buildings. We do a, a, a lot of one and two-family homes, actually, that are rentals. And in those buildings, I believe, that is about a hundred and seventy-eight buildings that we did completions on for heat in the last heat season.
And what was the work that was done by HPD?
So, and the work ranges, which is why the time to correct also ranges. In some buildings, it's restoring the utility and that can be done in a couple of days if it's a non-payment issue, right? Those are quick, very easy restorations. In some buildings, it is full replacement of the heating plant. And that could take some time, especially when it involves gas work, as I mentioned.
Thank you. And that is a boiler replacement?
Boiler replacement, a full replacement of the boiler.
Yes, got it. DOB, do you ever conduct proactive inspection of boilers or is it all self-report?
No, so, so just to give you like a general idea of what the boiler unit handles, we handle proactive inspections, which we refer to as audits. And we do them both on permanently installed boilers, as well as mobile boilers as well. Because basically, a mobile boiler is like a large boiler plant on wheels. So, we do do proactive inspections and we, we check to see, yeah, I'm sorry. So, we do check to see, for example, if there's proper permits being pulled for the mobile, for the permanent and mobile boilers. We also check to see what the conditions are in terms of operation. Are there combustion area issues, safety control issues, clearance issues? Is the boiler on, is it not, et cetera?
Council member, if, if I can, I'd just like to go back to your earlier question a little bit about HPD and DOB collaboration.
Yeah.
So, as part of our proactive effort, we have entered into an MOU with DOB to share information around the buildings and the heat sensor program in particular for this heat season. And we're going to focus on potentially doing joint inspections at those properties. So, we will get more familiar with kind of the information that DOB has on those. We'll be able to go out together and make some assessments. So, we're hoping that that will inform some of our responsiveness in the future.
Got it, and that's the first time that such a collaboration has taken place?
Yes.
Stabbed in the right direction. So, other, otherwise, DOB, what other, what are the, what causes DOB to conduct an audit of a boiler?
So, in general, the higher aim is obviously, we like to make sure that buildings have consistent heat. That's our objective. I mean, the, the reactive component to it is just complaints coming from our tenants and us not only just responding, but also looking into what the issues are. And then properly referring it whenever we need to refer it to our counterparts at HPD, et cetera.
Got it, so is it three-one-one data? Like, how do, how, how are complaints coming to DOB?
So, complaints come to three-one-one and it's referred to us in terms of priorities. Higher levels are A, Bs, et cetera.
Got it, okay. Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Hudson, who's joined us. Great. So, another one for, for DOB, regarding the Certificate of No Harassment Program. You know, Local Law One in twenty-eighteen established this pilot program requiring owners of certain buildings to obtain certification of no harassment or the CONH before filing for permits at DOB to perform certain construction work. Can you, can you give us an update or share how DOB might be, what kind of information DOB might be getting about heat and hot water concerns at a building in connection with this? Are we seeing heat and hot water being used in, in any, in, you know, to, to target tenants?
So, in terms of heat and hot water complaints and tenant harassment provisions, I, I don't really have, I can't really say there's a lot of issues coming down the pipeline regarding that. We have encountered situations where you have tenants who complain about their heating issues and we deal with the owners directly in those circumstances to try to make sure that we're very objective and that we're getting to where we need to get to in terms of restoring heat or making sure the issue goes away, whatever the heating issue is. Like, it could be, for example, like, a vibration coming from a boiler and we'll, we'll dig into, et cetera.
Uh, council member, just to clarify, most of the CONH requirements in terms of doing the investigation are at HPD. So, we can look into that question for you. It wasn't directed to us, so I didn't prepare anything on that.
So, I guess that explains why we don't get, we're not seeing a lot.
But it, it, it's filed, the information is filed with DOB? Or is it just HPD tells DOB yes or no because of the results of your investigations?
If a property owner wants to do certain types of work at a building that fall under the CONH program, whether it's the pilot program or the SRO program or the zoning resolution, once the owner goes to DOB to apply for permits, DOB tells them that they need to get the Certificate of No Harassment from HPD. So, then the owner has to file a separate application with HPD for the CONH investigation. And once that investigation is concluded, we share our outcome with the Department of Buildings and either the owner can proceed to get their permits or not, depending on the outcome of that investigation.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
And so, today, do you have any background on what kind of findings you, your CONH investigations are unearthing?
You know, in general, I would say, with, again, I don't have the numbers with me. We grant more CONH applications than we deny. When we find, have a finding, an internal finding, that there may have been harassment, there is a, a hearing that happens outside of the agency, you know, to further go through that finding and an owner can challenge that.
And the, that's a ECV? Oh, okay. Got it. Thank you. Okay. Moving back up. Okay, so, moving to the alternative enforcement program, so back to HPD. So, AEP requires HPD to perform frequent inspections to a select number of apartment buildings, two-hundred-and-fifty each year, track corrections of violations, issue orders to correct if the owner fails to act, and make repairs if necessary. This program can be very effective because the fines are escalating. The longer you wait to repair, the, the worse your fines get. So, just, can you provide us an update of the AEP program since what you shared last year? How, how has performance been? And in particular, I think, I recall you mentioning that fifteen percent of buildings that go through AEP will go back through AEP again. So, what is, what is that rate of repeat going through this program, which is supposed to be such a deterrent?
Thank you, council member. We focused our research on AEP to heat and hot water, I'm sorry for this hearing. So, we can go ahead and, and update you on the general AEP numbers after the hearing. But in terms of heat, there are currently six-hundred-and-forty-nine buildings in AEP. And of those, twenty-one percent had heat violations last year. Now, some of those, of course, are new buildings to this program that they just came in in January thirty-first or thereabouts, right? So, half of their heat season was prior to being in heats, in AEP and half their heat season was after. But the buildings in AEP that have heat violations basically are treated very much the same, right? So, AEP does do more monitoring, but they respond to complaints that come in through three-one-one. They can identify it when they're out there at the building doing their regular monitoring.
Does HPD have, have any evidence to suggest that AEP buildings tend to resolve their heat and hot water violations faster, more efficiently than buildings that are not in?
Buildings are required, I believe, just looking at Grace, to complete a hundred percent of their heat and hot water violations prior to discharge, right? So, heat must be provided, you know, in advance of them being discharged from the program if there were violations pre-existing or issues.
Got it, but they're in the program because they were pretty bad at doing a couple of different things.
About eighty, so, we looked at round sixteen, which is the most recent round of AEP, and about thirty-four percent of the buildings had heat violations prior to being in AEP. So, as you said, buildings don't get into AEP because of just heat. They have to have a number of issues and a lot of violations, but it certainly is one factor.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, and I, I'll look forward to an update on, just in general, how AEP buildings are doing. So, moving, moving to emergency repairs, we talked a little bit about what HPD has been doing. But just, you know, as you all know, HPD has the power to intervene and correct any emergency violations via the ERP program when a property owner fails to do so. So, with respect to heat and hot water, how long on average does it take HPD? Or under what circumstances does HPD decide that it's going to be HPD work, workers or contractors that are going to go in and do the work?
Thank you. So, as I said, there are about six thousand heat violations issued last heat season. About thirty-three hundred of those were considered emergency repair generating violations, which means we would take action to see if an emergency repair was necessary. So, our first steps, of course, is contacting the owner, letting them know. We contact the tenant. If the tenant tells us heat is restored by the time we contact them, the violation can be closed. We send staff out within, usually within days, to double-check to see where, where heat is being provided or not. Again, if we find that heat has been restored or we find actually an owner working, we'll monitor that repair until we find that the restoration is completed. And that is the vast majority of those violations. If we should go there on that visit and there's no evidence that any work is in progress, there's nothing on file with DOB in terms of ga, if it's a gas issue, you know, we will move to start the process to have heat restored. And again, that may be contacting the utility company to see if it's a utility issue, if it's a payment issue or a, a shut-off issue. We will hire a contractor. We have a process that is predefined where we have contractors on call to go and do an assessment to determine what needs to be done. And again, it can take a short time if it's a small piece that needs to be repaired and they can do that right away. They're authorized to do that. But if it is a full replacement, they need to order the parts, they need to order the boiler, they need to file with DOB as appropriate and they do file emergency work notifications. DOB has a process where a contractor can start kind of right away, as long as they file and they keep filing to show what's, what the progress is. And we've done that in, you know, less than two-hundred buildings for heat specifically, a little bit closer to three-hundred buildings when we're talking about heat and hot water.
So, I, I sort of hear you saying, though, that HPD emergency repair is, is going in when the landlord can't be found, definitely isn't doing work. How long might that take? And I know you said it depends on what the, what the issue is.
Repair is.
But, yeah, how, how long does it take to make that determination?
Um, the determination is made fairly quickly. I think, uh, the, what we count now, and this is actually one of the places we hope to improve for next year, what we count now is the time between the issuance of the violation and the closure of that violation, right? And that also includes administrative time on both ends in terms of the closure, because we need to make sure permits are filed and so on. What we're going to try to start counting is actually the time to heat restoration, right? Which will be a shorter period of time because, as I said, there's time between restoring the heat, getting all the permits filed, closing out the work. The median time right now is twenty-three days for HPD to close its violation after doing the repair.
Got it. So, that's after the repair is done.
That's when we close, no. There, we're not able to count when the heat is actually restored to when the work is, when the violation is closed. That's the period in which we count.
Okay.
Right? So, for example, we could, he could be restored on Monday. Our inspector doesn't get there until Wednesday to check and then we need to wait for the permits to issue to be resolved so we can close the job. So, right now, we're counting, we're not counting till Monday, we're counting till Friday or next week if we don't get the permits until then.
Okay. But it's, you're saying you're going to start counting until heat restoration, so when it's actually warm in people's homes?
Changed our system to be able to count to actual heat restoration date, which I think will be a more reflective of the actual timeline.
Okay. Thank you. So, moving, moving back to the heat sensor program. So, you're, you mentioned you recently submitted a new report. Thank you for that. The report showed that twenty-six of the fifty buildings selected for the heat sensor program in fiscal twenty-three actually installed a heat sensor and that over half of the buildings without heat sensors are in the Bronx. Surprising. So, what are, what are the steps that HPD is, is taking to ensure that buildings selected for the program are complying?
Thank you, council member. So, what we have started to look at is, of the buildings that did not install sensors, why didn't they install sensors? Because you can see also from the report that some of those buildings that did not install sensors also did not have heat issues during the season. So, the question is, how can we conversate with those owners to really understand what did they do that now they have no heat violations, even though they didn't install the sensors? And what benefit would installing the sensors provide in those properties? And I think that's where we're still doing analysis of this program about whether it is the installation of the sensor that is improving the conditions in the building or is it better to ensure that the owner is directing financial, you know, resources that they have to actually fixing the problem?
And in the updated law, we did create, you know, we negotiated in a, a provision that allows buildings to exit the program if they do not have violations during the heat season by January, right? Is there, are there changes that you would want to make to that in, in the ob, observation of improvements without the program?
I think we need to go through one full heat season with this change to, to kind of answer that question. So, I'm certain we'll be getting back to you with our next heat season report with some comments on that question.
Great, I'm all ears. So, in, in this recent report, you also mentioned that four buildings opted out. The tenants opted out of receiving heat sensors in their units. How is this checked?
So, the law requires also that the tenant fill out a, a form and we do audit those. So, we can contact the tenants. And we do go to some of those buildings and actually speak to them in person to make sure that they've signed the form.
Okay. One more. One second, I have my questions in a couple of different places. So, moving to litigation. So, when, when in particular does HPD pursue housing litigation for heat and hot water violations?
In general, we do not pursue litigation against buildings that have only one heat or hot water violation in the season. Other than that, it's generally we initiate cases.
Now, are we talking about HP actions or what kind of cases?
We refer to them as heat and hot water cases, but they are HP actions essentially, yes.
Got it. Okay. On average, how long do these HPD-initiated HP actions take from filing the case to resolving the heat violation?
So, a, a couple of things on that, council member. As we talked about the ERP program, that is the primary way that we ensure that the violations are resolved. Housing court can take a long time, as I'm sure you, you're aware. And so, we don't rely on that as the mechanism to say whether the heat violation is corrected or not in general. We bring heat ca, cases starting in, I would say, November and those cases will continue through the heat season. The timing it takes is really dependent on the court calendar in large part, right? So, it's not really within our control. Generally, we try to settle cases on the first appearance. When the owner comes in, we seek an order to correct, which is the most important, you know, act. you know, aspect is to make sure that, uh, we have that order if we need to go back to court. Um, uh, and we get a civil penalty in, in most cases. Again, that's dependent on the, on the property.
So, just, just so that I understand, there's a heat and hot water violation. It's not one of the seventy-five, seventy-two to seventy-five percent of buildings that only have one complaint? You know, it's one of the more persistent, uh, challenges. Um, the building has not been responsive? Like, when, when do you decide to take them to court? Because if they're not responsive, then you're pursuing ERP. If they are responsive, then you're trying to get repairs.
No, they're two totally separate tracks, so they happen simultaneously.
Okay.
We don't wait until ERP is resolved to make a determination on housing court.
Okay, so it's automatic?
It's an automatic referral for litigation. Um, and again, it doesn't, it is not dependent on the ERP process. Even if the owner has corrected the condition, it's, it's, doesn't influence whether or not we bring the litigation, because we're looking for that order, um, and we are, we obtain that penalty if it's warranted.
Got it. Um, so I see that there was an increase in heat and hot water HP actions commenced by HPD from a thousand one hundred and twenty during the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two heat season, and then, uh, one thousand eight hundred seventy-four during twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three heat se, seasons. Are these numbers right and what is accounting for the increase?
Um, I, we'll, we'll have to double check the numbers. We can certainly get back to you on that. There was an increase, and I would attribute it to the increase in the number of violations issued.
Got it. Yet, one thousand eight hundred seventy-four is still much, uh, lower than the number of buildings where you pursued ERP and the number of violations filed. So, what's, what's accounts for that delta?
That count of cases can have more than one violation. It's not one case per violation, right? So, if we issue a heat and hot water violation at the same time, that's, could be one case. If we issue three violations, it could still be one case. They're not, uh, a one-for-one.
Okay, that, that makes sense. Um, but just looking at your testimony, uh, mention of two thousand three hundred fifty-three distinct buildings for heat. Um, not recalling which year you mentioned this is from, uh, but there's still, eighteen hundred is still much lower than, than the amount of buildings, properties that are, that HPD is going into. So, so what's the delta there?
We can, we can lay out the numbers for you. I don't want to speak off the top of my head in order to, uh, in order to say that. So, let us lay out the numbers clearly and then, um, we can certainly answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Um, sounds good. Thank you. My esteemed counsel suggests that, that I ask for the HPD, DOB, MOU just to understand, uh, how you're coordinating on heat season. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, okay, um, moving, moving to the seven A program in particular. Um, so you are well aware of some of the criticisms that you receive, uh, from advocates and folks across the city on the, what seems to be scarce use of seven A. Uh, so, seven A, which allows judges and housing court to appoint property administrators when the owner of property has effectively abandoned the property, uh, and then, and the conditions of the property are dangerous to life, health and safety of tenants. Um, Community Service Society highlights that HPD uses, uh, brings seven A proceedings approximately twenty-three times per year, uh, compared to roughly ten thousand chronically distressed, uh, buildings in New York City, representing, representing over a hundred fifteen thousand apartments. Um, so this is a tool that could be used, uh, against, you know, these perennially, uh, bad actors. Do you think that the agency is using seven A proceedings enough?
Thank you, council member. Uh, again, we prepared seven A answers based on heat, but I would say that just in general, um, you know, our use of seven A, uh, is really for properties where all else has failed to bring the building back into compliance. Um, we bring hundreds, if not a thousand, comprehensive cases every year. We bring thousands of heat and hot water cases every year. Uh, we bring other types of cases, you know, access warrant cases, fall certification cases. These are all tools that we have at our disposal. Um, we have the AEP program, we have the heat sensor program, underlying conditions program. We have so many tools, um, to try to get, uh, properties to come into compliance. And I think, you know, we wisely try to use each type of tool. A seven A case really requires us to be able to convince judges and courts that there is no other avenue through which we can get compliance. And that is a, a pretty high bar, um, for us to meet every time.
Got it. So, can you contrast, uh, a comprehensive case for, for instance? What are, what are we seeing? I mean, the, the word comprehensive can, can include a lot, but, um, what's sort of the, the mix of problems that a comprehensive case is trying to address?
A comprehensive case, in a comprehensive case, we are seeking correction of all open violations. And generally, if there is an owner in the picture, that is the way to go because what we are trying to do is push the court to have the owner use their resources to make the repairs on the building, um, and address any concerns. So, we seek an order to correct, which gives timelines for the owner to make corrections. We go back and we re-inspect based on that. We can go back and bring contempt cases, um, you know, and get significant penalties against property owners. Uh, with our anti-harassment unit, we've been very successful too in bringing portfolio litigation against an owner from multiple buildings at the same time, um, and seeking, uh, the correction of, of thousands of violations across a portfolio. I think this is the way to make sure that owners are being responsive.
Okay, so, you, you are well familiar, and I often use examples from my own district, uh, at these hearings. Our district is, you know, you can walk into any given building on Grand Concourse or on University Avenue, or on Grand, or on Davidson, and you almost certainly will be walking into a building that has upwards of twenty or thirty violations. So, can you help me understand, is it the case that HPD is pursuing comprehensive litigation or one of these tools, uh, at all these open buildings? How many open, how many cases is HPD bringing to housing court each year? And what is, what is HPD doing about these just tens, thousands and thousands of buildings across the city, many of which are in the Bronx, that have these, you know, just pervasive issues?
Thank you, council member. And again, we can provide you those numbers. Um, we don't have those for today. Uh, but we can certainly provide you how many cases we initiate and all types of cases. Um, as you know, AEP selects two hundred and fifty buildings every year. Through underlying conditions, we select between fifty and a hundred buildings every year. Heat Sensors picks fifty buildings now, gonna be every year. Um, and that, those are just some of our programs. So, um, we're always responsive, I hope, to you and your, your colleagues. Whenever you bring buildings to our attention, it's difficult to be in every single building, as you said. There are quite a few buildings. Um, we use our Division of Neighborhood Preservation to try to help owners who, um, maybe don't have the resources. And again, we push hard on, uh, my colleagues in other parts of HPD to really make the resources available for people when the boiler breaks, right? It was expens, expensive to replace a boiler, um, and for smaller property owners, that is a challenge. Um, for the bigger buildings, your Grand Concourse buildings, or, you know, uh, those types of buildings, enforcement is really, really the tool that we have. Um, and so, we try and do as best we can to make sure all of these tools are effective.
Got it. So, what, what triggers a comprehensive case being brought to court?
So, generally, we're looking at a, a good number of recent violations being issued, um, and owner not making the repair. Uh, if there's a lot of fall certification, we generally go that route, but those are buildings we can certainly look at as well for comprehensive litigation. Um, sometimes there are referrals from people where we don't have a lot of violations, and then we have to go down the road of either, either having the anti-harassment unit go out and issue violations or code enforcement do a building-wide inspection. Um, so, it does take some time, um, depending on what stage the building is in at the time, you know, that it comes to our attention. Um, we run data to show us, you know, what buildings are, uh, uh, having, you know, not quite meeting the AEP cutoff, but getting there, um, to look at those buildings as well.
Right. Um, and, and I'm just in part reacting to the reality. You can't be everywhere at the same time, right? The resources are constrained. But there are, you know, ten thousand buildings, uh, across the city of New York that are chronically distressed. And, you know, I think even when you add up, you know, all of the buildings that are participating in AEP and, you know, the range of comprehensive litigation, everything else, um, I wait for the number, but I'm willing to venture that we're talking about maybe two thousand buildings, hopefully. Um, so, yeah, I'd, I'd just like, like to understand and, and work more, right? I don't think this necessarily can be answered at the hearing, but understand how HPD thinks about the universe of buildings that, you know, have tenants living in, in substandard conditions and what, what more we can be doing, whether it's, you know, within code enforcement, within other entities to, you know, drive better conditions.
Thank you, council member, and I, I think we wholeheartedly agree with that. I think, you know, we constantly need, need, need to be assessing our tools and thinking about new tools, um, to help us get deeper.
Thank you. Um, okay, seven A and heat and hot water. We did say this hearing was specifically about heat and hot water. Um, so, how many seven A cases did HPD commence that had, uh, heat and hot water as part of the problem?
Um, that specific question, we will have to get back to you with, council member. There are currently twenty-four buildings in the seven A program, um, and they've come in over the years. So, it will take us some time if you want specifically on those buildings to know. Um, but generally, there are a lot of systemic issues at seven A buildings, and I would not be surprised that it's a very high percentage.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Um, okay. And just so that I understand, you know, the interplay between different programs and enforcement methods that HPD has. A seven A building will be a building that HPD has brought comprehensive litigation, that ha, HPD has done emergency repairs in, has done all of these other things?
It doesn't have to be a checkbox in every box, but generally speaking, we want to exhaust all of our options. If there is no owner in the picture, there's no, there may be no point for comprehensive litigation, for example. Generally, yes, high ERP. Generally, yes, high violations.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. Um, turning, turning back to HPD inspectors on the field. And by the way, I always, I, I said it on, on Thursday, and, and I'll say it today again. You know, I, I love running to HPD and DOB inspectors on the field. Like, these folks are from different parts of the neighborhood and they, you know, they have a real ear to the ground. And, you know, they seem to love their work. So, thank you, uh, to all of our inspectors for the work that you do to, to keep us safe. And I will never stop advocating for more of you. Um, so, good to see the, the lower vacancy rates, but I will, you know, continue to, to push on that front. Um, so, one complaint that I, you know, consistently hear from constituents, and, you know, I think my colleagues also share this concern, is the issue of inspectors coming at times that don't work for the tenants, right? So, uh, access not being able to be provided. Uh, what does HPD do to coordinate, uh, with inspectors, uh, to coordinate inspections, if, if anything?
Thank you, council member. Um, so, you do know we receive hundreds of thousands of complaints a year. Um, and this is one of the challenges we faced. Um, and I think eventually we will hope to find a technological solution um, where we can match, you know, the department's needs to do inspections quickly with the tenant's availability. It is a very difficult thing for us. Um, what we generally do is we attempt an inspection, and if, if no one is home to provide access, the inspector will leave a card, uh, under the door for the tenant, asking them to call us to schedule an appointment if they still need us to come. We also generate a letter, um, not just something, just in case the card doesn't get left or the tenant doesn't get it. We mail a letter to the tenant saying we were here at this time, again, providing them with a telephone number to make an appointment. And we do that at both the complaint inspection part of the process and the emergency repair part of the process. For, for heat inspections also, um, since that's our topic today, if we go to a unit and the person isn't home, we do attempt access to other units in the building, uh, to make sure that, you know, usually you can knock on someone else's door and someone is home, and we can take a temperature there.
Yeah. Yeah, I've, I've run into inspectors doing that. People are like, "Why? I didn't call!" It's a whole thing. But it's great. Thank you, thank you for doing that, inspectors. Um, okay, and so, last, last one on this. Um, so, a controller audit finding that HPD's settlements on heat and hot water cases in housing court is usually much lower than the penalty amount. Um, what drives how HPD settles, uh, these, these cases and the amounts settled for?
So, generally speaking, I think that controller's report was looking at our default penalties. Um, and, you know, our default penalties, uh, when we would ask for them would cover the entire period from the issuance of the violation until the default, default penalty was asked for, which could be months, weeks. Generally, heat is not out that long. So, when you come in and settle those penalties, you know, the court wants to take a penalty for the period of time that there was actually no heat, not the period of time that the court process lasted. And so, we tried to have that conversation with the controller, um, but I think there was something missed in the translation.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Um, what programs that are coming down the pike? Um, what resources, uh, exist either on the DOB side for boilers or on the HPD side to help private owners, you know, to, to meet some of the financial challenges that may be causing the heat and hot water issues?
So, I, I guess I'll start. Again, um, you know, the council is aware of things like the homeowner help desk uh, and the other programs, uh, home fix that, um, HPD is specifically advocating for. Um, you know, I know that there are other agencies also doing work to try and, um, engage owners uh, to provide apartments, um, and offering, you know, incentives to help owners meet that, those financial challenges. I think, you know, we want to make sure that owners understand what resources are available. I think communication is key. Um, just again, and, uh, going back for one second to our collaborations with DOB, um, we do try to send out, um, on their behalf, and I think I probably mentioned this last week as well, um, you know, notices to owners, reminding them about their boiler inspection requirements, urging them, uh, to do what they can in advance of problems arising. Um, we do the same around pests and mold, you know, reminding them to do their annual inspections and address leaks early when they come, address pests early when you see them, you know, in collaboration with the Department of Health. Don't wait until your building is infested when you have a violation, you know. Do the line, do the building, check the garbage. Um, I think, you know, we just need to continue to encourage property owners to take as holistic and early of an approach as they can to some issues that eventually become, can become extremely problematic.
Got it. Thank you. Um, DOB, do you find that most owners are aware of the heat program? Uh, the HEAP program, uh, to assist them in making boiler repairs or replacements?
Uh, I'll be honest, yeah, in terms of, so, first I want to talk about in terms of, let's say, like, the, um, like, the Home Relief, there's a Home Relief program that's for owners where, um, DOB does not issue a, uh, a, a penalty, like a class one violation, a class two violation, et cetera. We, we give owners a certain amount of time to actually resolve the issue, a DOB violation, which is a lesser type of violation. In terms of, uh, communicating with the owners, addressing your question, I haven't really, I haven't really had that kind of dialogue in terms of like, you know, are they actually aware of it? Not really sure. But the only thing that we do make sure we do is, we make sure that we provide them with guidance in terms of how to resolve any kind of, um, legality issues they have with their boilers. Let's say if, for example, their boiler is not registered for one reason or another. We try to provide them with guidance, how to make sure that they register it, which permits they need, et cetera. If there's any, let's say, for example, um, issues with their boilers in terms of code compliance, we try to provide them with guidance in terms of that. But in terms of means and methods, et cetera, programs, no.
I know that HP, HPD, uh, DOB has had more, um, you know, office hours for homeowners that are more in tune with the schedules that most people have, so late hours and things like that. Um, have you, do you have any, any information on how much- So, late hours and things like that. Um, have you, do you have any any information on how much more outreach, eh, DOB has been able to do through these initiatives?
Yeah, yeah, thi- this is fantastic, especially with the 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 previous five years worth of boiler violations that went out recently. A lot of homeowners, a lot of building owners, they're asking questions like, you know, how do we resolve these, uh, particular, uh, open outstanding violations? They're not aware sometimes of like the waiver provisions and the rule itself. And so, we have people from like the, um, administrative part of the boiler division to sit at these particular, um. Outings on Tuesday nights, and they answer questions. We also had a program as well with DOB where we were going out on weekends and doing outreach. Um, and actually resolving issues on the spot as well. That's another program we're, program we're doing as well. And a lot of questions came in about boiler, annual boiler violations because of the massive amount that went out in the past five years. For the past five years.
Uh, also, I would like to give, uh, uh, some, uh, love to the neighborhood housing services. Because we do also refer a lot of property owners, um, to them, and they can also be very helpful. Uh, to, you know, especially smaller property owners.
Love received. Um, okay, so, uh. Regarding inspectors in in both agencies, how is the hiring freeze going to impact the hiring that you are trying to do? Um, you mentioned upcoming job fairs, um, and will inspectors at each agency be exempted under, under the mayor's guidelines? Of public health, safety, or revenue generation?
Housing inspectors are exempt.
On the DOB side, we're okay. We're pretty healthy and there's no issues at the moment.
But are you exempt?
Exempt from a hiring freeze? Well, no, we're not.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Glad to have that on the record. Um, okay, last set of questions here. Oh, I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Oswald Lees. Thank you for joining us. You have questions? Great. Um, so last few set of questions from me here. Um, they might seem, be seemingly unconnected, unconnected because I've asked them in in different parts of the hearing. Uh, but HPD, do inspectors ever come overnight for inspections?
Yes, and actually, uh, I should have mentioned that earlier too. We are expanding the number of inspectors who, um, work, and they will probably work until one o'clock in the morning. Um, we will, of course, contact tenants before we show up at twelve thirty AM, uh, to do those inspections. Um, we, uh, are planning to to have about twelve inspectors available to do those inspections.
That's great. Um, in connection to the the MOU, you mentioned the MOU around Heat Seek, but does HPD and DOB, do you ever do joint inspections in other circumstances?
We do join inspections in terms of.
Um, uh, in particular, one building in the Bronx, uh, last year. Um, we definitely did a couple of inspections at a property where, um, there seemed to be intermittent issues with the boiler. And I think the idea was to see if if between the two agencies, we could identify, um, you know, what the, what the issues were. And actually, I think that building had no further heat complaints that season. I'm not sure if act- anything actually was, um, you know, we found anything at that inspection. But as needed, um, you know, I think our agencies work well together when necessary.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, we know that just having an inspector come, like just the presence can change behavior by the landlord. So, it's important to have that presence even, you know, what, for whatever, whatever the the circumstances, yeah. So, more inspectors, no pegs, okay. Um, okay. Yes, okay. So, has HPD ever used programs like Neighborhood Pillars to facilitate preservation purchases? When a landlord consistently does not provide adequate heat, um, or demonstrates that they have an inability to do so?
Um, thank you for that question, councilmember. I think we try to work collaboratively with our colleagues on the development side. Um, when owners approach the agency about seeking, uh, I would say. I I don't know about Neighborhood Pillars specifically. I will have to get back to you. Um, but I think in general, uh, our preservation programs, um, when they can be, um, uh. Applicable, you know, we make those. The issues clearly are that those programs take time, right? You don't apply to whatever preservation program and get the money the next day. Um, and often, if we're dealing with, you know, issues right now. Um, unfortunately, those programs just have too long a lead time, um, even in the best case scenario to, to provide that relief to the property owner.
Thank you. Okay, well, that surprisingly concludes my questions, um, and I see that my colleagues have ran out. Uh, but no, I I just, you know, wanna wanna end on, uh, you know, the, this portion of the hearing on this note. Um, you know, there are, there are buildings that have these pervasive issues, and it's not to take away from the great work that HPD and DOB are doing. In fact, I've, I'm very happy to hear, uh, some of the improvements, uh, that the agency has made this year over last year, more inspectors. Uh, trends are going in the right direction in terms of the kinds of heat complaints that we're seeing. Um, but, you know, there's, there's still, you know, I I represent a district where the median worker earns twenty-three thousand dollars. And the, the, what that means in terms of housing quality is that they are often taken advantage of. Um, and I just want to make sure that we're working toward an agency and agencies that are able to get compliance from owners. Because we're, we're not there yet. Uh, so look forward to continued conversation. Thank you for your participation today.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you.
Oh, then my apologies. My my apologies, um.
Yes.
So, I guess maybe I misunderstood the question, but, um, in terms of, uh, DOB inspectors, they're actually exempt from the peg. I I guess from from my perception, I was thinking that, like, will they have a little bit of impact? I was saying that basically my staff is, they're fully staffed. That's all I was saying, and there's no, nothing to peg, basically.
Got it.
Other side, so, just to clarify that, my apologies.
Thank you. So, both housing inspectors and buildings inspectors are exempt from the peg. Thank you so much. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we will now turn to testimony from the public. Please listen for your name to be called, whether you are here in person or appearing on Zoom. If you are testifying on Zoom, when it is your turn to testify, you will be prompted to unmute. Please accept this prompt and begin your testimony. In the interest of time, your, uh, testimony will be limited to two minutes per person. And we'll give it a few seconds for folks to file out of room. Uh, we will start with, uh, Adam Roberts. When you are prompted, you can, to unmute, you can start speaking.
You may begin.
Sure. Thank you for holding this hearing today. I am Adam Roberts, Policy Director for the Community Housing Improvement Program, also known as CHIP. We represent New York's housing providers, including apartment building owners and managers. And we are here to express concerns about the city's existing heat season policy. The current heat season policy of maintaining minimum temperatures of sixty-two to sixty-eight degrees, depending on the time of day. From October first through May thirty-first is outdated. City heat season policy must recognize that climate change is real and dramatically elevates indoor air temperatures. Summer heat now lasts well into October and starts in May. Yet, the city's heat season remains the same as if climate change were not a reality. The current heat season schedule hampers the ability of rental buildings to comply with laws like Local Law ninety-seven. Since turning on building-wide heating and cooling systems is a laborious process, rental buildings are forced to pump heat even when the outside temperature is warm. This increases a building's carbon emissions, complicating its path to comply with Local Law ninety-seven. Heat season may force many rental buildings onto alternative compliance paths or out of compliance entirely. Ideally, rental buildings could better control temperatures by performing costly but necessary sustainable design work, such as electrification and facade replacement. However, state legislative changes in twenty nineteen, which eliminated the ability of buildings with rent-stabilized apartments to recoup the cost of retrofitting. Have led banks to refuse to provide loans for retrofitting. Without loans, owners cannot pay to institute sustainable design measures. And no contractor, architect, or engineer will electrify a building or replace a facade without the assurance that an owner can pay. The impact of this outdated heat season policy is that tenants and apartment building workers live and work in unnecessarily uncomfortable environments. Heat season should be readjusted to reflect the fact that climate change is real, Local Law ninety-seven must be effectively implemented. And that work necessary to better control indoor air temperatures is currently too costly for buildings with rent-stabilized apartments. We hope the council will work to fix this problem. Again, thank you for holding this hearing.
Thank you, Adam. Um, can I just ask a a clarifying question? So, how exactly would you change the, what is your recommendation for the changes to the definition of heat season?
Uh, there we go. Sorry, it was not, uh, unmuted. Um, I don't think there's a a specific date that it should be changed to. But currently saying that heat season starts, uh, as early as the beginning of October. I mean, as we've seen, we had summer temperatures last week, um, and this is the end of October. Um, we've had seventy-degree days well into November. Um, and and the same can be said for spring, too. Um, it could be very, very warm at this point in April. Certainly, early May can often feel like summer. So, requiring that buildings turn on their heat, uh, to sixty-eight degrees, then, uh, i- is really the the core problem.
Thank you. Thank you so much, um, Adam, and that, uh, your testimony also reminds me, we have a compliance path for rent-stabilized buildings. Uh, for Local Law ninety-seven that I I, you know, have some concerns about. So, I'd love to to hear more of your thoughts to make sure that we can make sure that our affordable, uh, buildings across the city are, you know, uh, electrifying. And and, uh, becoming more carbon-free. So, more, more to come on that. Thank you.
Excellent.
Next, we'll hear from Theo Chino.
You may begin.
Hello, can you hear? My name is Theo Chino. I'm the first National Secretary of the Social Democrat of America, the socialist faction of the Democratic Party. Also known as the Committee of the Second International Socialist International. We are type-two socialist, and you can check out our website at Socialist U S to understand the differences. Because we believe human, housing is a human right, and as socialist, we need to empower the city to actually fix the tenant concern, such as bringing heat and hot water. Currently, the law are just word on paper, so we need to change how government can be proactive if the landlord failed to manage their property. We socialist believe that landlording is a service job, just like driving a cab or being a doctor. And as such, the city of New York should issue license. The goal is not to burden the landlord, but instead to provide the mean to adequately do their job, assist them with training if needed, if they are overwhelmed. And also to provide flexibility. Concerning Mr. Robert testimony, it's a little bit moot, since the outside temperature is based, the heat. Rules are based on the outside temperature. The outside temperature, because of climate change, will go up. Therefore, the heat doesn't need to be turned immediately. This is just pure management, so we don't need to change those rules. Also, if a landlord is is responsible, is unresponsive, we need to city to lower the threshold of when ERP is triggered. We cannot wait until we peak hundred building. Every citizen need to have decent housing. We also need the HPD inspector on the ground to be able to answer complaint without pointing the finger to another HPD department and telling people to call three-one-one. If HPD is unable to allocate resource, it's for the city council about, to think about breaking HPD into various departments. So, citizens are not frustrated when HPD start pointing the finger to another HPD department. This city needs a vision and start moving towards a model that is made for the tenant and the landlord. So, we can ensure domestic tranquility and promote general welfare. Another idea we socialist type-two have is to, is the desire to tax the rich. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Theo.
Okay. Uh, Julissa Sarmiento? Noelle Francois? Oh, please come up to the desk. Thank you.
Uh, I want to begin my testimony by thanking Councilmember Perina Sanchez and the Committee on Housing and Buildings. Is it on? No? Is it on? Okay. Uh, I want to begin my testimony by thanking Councilmember Perina Sanchez and the Committee on Housing and Buildings for holding this hearing. My name is Noelle Francois. I'm the executive director of a nonprofit called Heat Seek. We're the only nonprofit in the city working specifically with tenants who are not receiving adequate heat in their apartments in the wintertime. We use smart temperature sensors to help accurately and reliably document the indoor temperature, prove exactly how often the temperature is too cold in the apartment. Citywide heat complaints remain relatively stable year over year, at about two hundred thousand each year. However, only a small fraction of those complaints translate into heat violations by HPD. We believe, and our data shows, that many, many legitimate heat complaints are not translating into violations. After doing this work for almost a decade, we believe that we have an exclusively, uh, an exclusively complaint-driven system for maintaining the city's housing stock is inefficient and ineffective. We've stepped in as a third party to help tenants accurately document the temperature in their apartments. Last heat season, Heat Seek sensors in just a hundred and fifty apartments documented over fifty-nine thousand hours in which the temperature was below the legal limit. Yet, those buildings received just ninety violations. Heat Seek has documented cases in twenty buildings where sensors collected more than a hundred hours of illegally cold temperature. And tenants called heat complaints in, and they received zero violations. So, we know that, uh, the violations that HPD is issuing are just a small fraction of what's actually happening in buildings. There's a better way. Using technology, we can know exactly what the temperature is inside tenants' apartments at all times. Real-time data transmission by H, uh, used by HPD would make them more efficient and effective. There's no reason for HPD to keep guessing at what the temperature is inside people's apartments when widely available technology exists that can tell us exactly that. We strongly urge HPD to adopt this technology with the enthusiasm that it requires and deserves. And have inspectors install temperature sensors themselves to address repeat complaints. Serious heat violations rarely exist in a vacuum. Uh, thank you.
No, you can go finish.
Okay, great. Serious heat violations rarely exist in a vacuum, as our data analysis of the heat sensors program shows. Buildings in the program benefit from the increased scrutiny of HPD inspectors coming biweekly to those programs, or those buildings. Because of those biweekly inspections, buildings in the program report higher rates of violation for all kinds of housing issues, not just heat. It's clear that complaint-based inspections are a burden on tenants and often fail to surface serious issues. However, when HPD takes a more proactive approach and visits bad actor buildings consistently, issues are identified and addressed. The inability of our city government to adequately tackle the city's heating crisis feeds directly into the city's inability to preserve affordable housing. And the housing crisis we're currently facing. Evictions and poor maintenance are two sides of the same coin. Failure to maintain the city's affordable housing stock is not an option, but it is the path that we're on. We must take a more aggressive approach to adequately maintaining the affordable housing we currently have, because rents are continuing to rise at alarming rates. And affordable housing is not being built at a sufficient rate to meet demand. One of the best ways to address housing is to keep people who are currently housed in their homes. But we can't do that if those homes are allowed to fall into disrepair, to the point that they're unlivable and tenants are forced to move out. We live in the twenty-first century, in the age of technology, and we cannot continue to operate as if the tools are not available to us. Our failure to adapt is a failure to society and a failure to protect tenants in New York City. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Francois. Um, so, very helpful testimony, and thank you for for meeting with my team in advance of the hearing. Um, so, if you can just share on the record, um, he, the devices that Heat Seek uses, how is the information collected? How is it transmitted to whom? Um, and what, how do you address privacy concerns that arise from the use of these devices?
Sure, absolutely. So, all tenants who have a Heat Seek sensor opt in. So, they come to us and request a sensor, because they're in a building that has consistent chronic heating issues. Um, and then, the way that the. And then, the way that the sensors transmit data is, uh, twofold. If a tenant has Wi-Fi, we can connect a smart temperature sensor, which is essentially just a thermometer that connects to the internet. We connect it to their own Wi-Fi and it transmits their data hourly up to our web app, which we maintain as a neutral, third-party nonprofit. We also can work with tenants who don't have Wi-Fi. We use a cellular data SIM card. Um, so, it operates like a cellphone. But again, it transmits the data up to our app. And then, tenants have access to their data. They can also designate an advocate, an attorney, a tenant organizer, who can also view their data.
Thank you. And how does this compare to HPD's implementation of the heat sensor program? To your knowledge?
In what sense?
The device and the information transmission and all that.
So, my understanding is that the heat sensors program, HPD requests a printout of the data from the landlords, like, every 30 days, whereas ours is transmitted in real time, so someone could watch the data come in hourly and, you know, in theory, send an inspector when they see that the apartment is in violation and catch that violation.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, yes, I've, I've had numerous conversations with HPD about whether we can do the data collection in a better way that it is, that is not relying solely on landlords and owners, uh, printing information and sending it to HPD for enforcement because there are, uh, obvious concerns with that. So, gonna continue to welcome your advocacy and, um, you know, just ideas that you have about, uh, how HPD can better conduct the program.
We would be happy to help.
Thank you so much.
Diane P. BJ Dondapani. Asfandair Javedeed. Okay, this concludes public testimony. If we have inadvertently forgotten to call on someone to testify, uh, if you could please raise your hand using the Zoom raise hand function, we will try to hear from you now.
Okay, with that, this public hearing is concluded. I want to thank all of the staff members who helped, uh, bring this hearing together. And with that, have a good afternoon.